We'll call this regular workshop meeting to order and we have a proposed agenda for the night's meeting and I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion here none, all in favor, say to five percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have adoption of the minutes and consent items. You have minutes from the December 6th, 2022 regular and workshop combined meeting and you have six consent items.
Move approval for the combined workshop and regular city council meeting and the consent items? Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Here none, all in favor, say to five percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that was easy. So we'll go on to our discussion items for tonight and we'll be with first we'll have the essential single family rehabilitation loan pool grant. Tracy, I'm assuming is going to present this.
Yes, sir. Tracy is going to get us started on this item there. You'll see that these three items that we're presenting there put in as discussion items. You'll notice that there's an action there if council is ready to take an action afterwards. If not, then our plan is to present that back to you at the next meeting for consideration.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Thank you for having me today. Wanted to bring an opportunity for partnership with the Wilmington area rebuilding ministry, otherwise known as Warm. Warm is a nonprofit that operates in about seven counties and they also have a local office here in the city of Jacksonville. Warm provide free repairs for low income homeowners to include the elderly, disabled, and veterans. And they have already repaired or modified over 200 substandard houses throughout eastern North Carolina. Why should we partner with Warm? CDVG funds can repair some of the units here in the city of Jacksonville, but some things that city CDVG funds cannot do. We cannot assist with properties owned by heirs. CDVG funds must be provided to the sole owner of the property. We cannot assist with mobile homes within the city limits and we cannot assist with small repairs to sustain homes, such as repairing rotted woods and fascia boards and gutters. We also have discovered in our area in the neighborhood of Country Club Villas that we have about 15 units that will benefit from this partnership. So if we get if we get approved to partner with Warm, those units can also benefit from that partnership. North Carolina Housing Finance Agency has contracted with Warm and Warm has been awarded about 21 grant funded contracts to include the Healthy Opportunities Pilot Program, which is a repair program for Medicaid recipients. So Warm is applying for the essential single family rehab grant for $162,000 and they're asking for $10,000 to increase the scoring for their application. So it is recommended that council approve the $10,000 matching grant, which will strengthen Warm's application and will benefit at least three qualifying households here in the city of Jacksonville.
And this would be in the city of Jacksonville, inside the city of Jacksonville, right?
Yes, sir.
For all that $10,000 towards them.
Yes, sir.
Now, would the other things that were excluded earlier, can they be included now with this program or that's still the same thing? Okay.
Yes. What we cannot do, Warm will be able to benefit and help and assist those folks who we can assist.
I'm sure if they apply, they don't get it for some reason. Would we get the money back or is that gone or?
Oh, yes. That money will stay with us until they do a request and we and I will oversee and make sure that those funds stay within city limits of Jacksonville. So basically what I'll do is do a referral to Warm and say, we have this applicant that may qualify and then they will take on that responsibility and oversee the project.
But then you would only dispense our $10,000 as a partial match to the cost?
Yes, a partial match to the cost. So it may be $1,000, it may be $2,000. It all depends on the total cost of the repairs.
How many people do you get to apply for this?
Say again?
So how many people do you get to apply for this program?
Oh, they would need to contact Warm and we still get calls in for repairs and for the ones that we can't do, we will refer those to Warm.
Thank you. And right now, we're just getting council's agreement for them to submit their application saying that there's a city match. We're not, we don't have to appropriate anything at this time.
Not at this time. We just need permission to partner with them so that they can put it on the application that the city will put in the $10,000 at the point.
Support, basically.
Yes.
It's an established organization. They've been approved for many things already. Are winning awards and doing great work. This is a great way to multiply this investment in our needy areas to help improve the housing.
Yep, good investment.
Comes back multiplied.
And this come out of general fund?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you can explain why?
So the reason that we need to ask for general fund money is because the grant money that they're going to be awarded is coming from federal government. So you cannot match federal government with federal government. They have to have a local match. And wanted to, you know, also say that this is outside of our nonprofit process, but this is when this application is due. So this is why we're coming to ask, you know, for this money at this time.
This program's been in existence for how long?
This program, as far as the essential family program, it has been in existence for at least 20 years.
Of course, we haven't had any nonprofits that have participated in it. Now, since Warm has had the interest in basically supporting Anzlo County more, as long as they have a partner, then we want to take advantage of this opportunity.
There's also money that's that will be coming flowing through to other cities such as the urgent repair grant. Warm can apply for that. They would need matching funds for that. So this will be a win-win situation for Warm to partner with us and making sure that our citizens can benefit from those dollars that's going to be coming into the county.
And you can talk about Astra and Warm works with Astra. Astra is well, not just hurricane recovery, but?
Yes, Warm is also a partner with Astra. So when we have an event such as a hurricane event, Astra will rally all of our resources and Warm is a very valuable resource because they operate with volunteers. They also have some funding so that we can get these folks back into their houses from hurricane events. So they've been very, very instrumental in getting folks back into their homes from the last hurricane we had.
Tracy, in the past, we had done some repairs for elderly individuals. When is the last time we've actually done that?
For when you say, when you're talking about the city of Jacksonville? It's been at least over a year. We just did a repair. We just completed a repair with a, in fact, it was an emergency repair with a HVA system. It was a homeowner that came through our program and she didn't have funds to repair her air conditioning. So we did an emergency repair before the cold snap hit recently that we had and we repaired her unit.
Will we see Warm's taking over more of that for us as a result of leveraging our funds with them?
Yes. So with that, what Warm has done, I know we had several partnerships, but with Warm, they have gone already, they have already gone in and made some repairs and the repairs that they cannot do, now we can go behind and finish out those repairs. So we have a case that we're doing on Annie Avenue that they went in and they repaired the roof, which was a big expense, but now she needs some more repairs done underneath the house. So that's when we can go in and do those repairs underneath her house.
Thank you.
What we need is council to agree that we can have Warm say there's a match from the city.
Let me have an ask a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the $10,000 match for Warm.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Here none, all in favor, say to five percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Tracy. Maybe now that the Warm item's over, we could turn the heat down.
I think it feels good.
We're only depress you on a level.
Run, run said it there.
It's kind of hot, ain't it?
I thought it felt good. We need to take that to a vote. I'm good. I voted to keep it just like it is.
He's the massive pussy on Antarctica.
Especially we got Wally presenting up here.
Next, I hear some fee schedule amendment and this is water rates and our satellite annexations. And Wally?
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I apologize. You actually have me for the next two items, so. I didn't set the agenda. But with that, I'll try to be brief. So what we want to talk to you tonight is one of the challenges we face with satellite annexations. And with that, what I'd like to do is just go ahead and jump in. As we all know, legislation's changed. The city can no longer involuntarily annex properties. So we can't go in and say, you know, this neighborhood should be part of the city, so we're going to annex it. The way that we grow is by voluntary annexation only. Typically, that comes from a developer who is primarily looking for sewer. The challenge that comes is in many of these cases, the developer is coming looking for sewer so they can meet the density or the development requirements they need for the track. But in most cases, with satellite annexation, the city doesn't have any water infrastructure near the development site. So as an example, you can kind of see in the lower left corner, I guess, left hand side of the screen, you'll see two areas that are have bold. Both of those are satellite annexations. The top left is actually near Southwest High School. That was the Trask annexation. And the one to the right of that is Springfield Apartments. And there's a second portion coming with that development also. And just to give you an idea, the city had sewer in this area. It's pretty readily available primarily because we've done a project with Onwassa for the Springdale Pump Station that serves this area. And our force main runs right through this, literally right through this area. The challenge is the closest water is up near the intersection of 53 and 258. So you can see the Trask property would be approximately 2,500 feet from city water infrastructure. And then the Springfield development is actually another 1,500 feet from that. So and I'll come back to that development because we do have development there. On the other side of the city, we have what we call the Meadowview Annexation. This is actually a track off of Drummer Kellum Road. This was Mr. Morton annexes property for 96, give or take, single family homes. So the challenge is we had sewer in this area that was constructed or as a result of construction of the small pump station that served a multifamily development there. And that pump station could handle this development. That was also done by Mr. Morton. But again, water to this site is more than 2,500 feet away. And in addition, we would have to have easements to get there because it would be across country, across fields that are still farmed. So the challenge we have is in these cases, the city doesn't have water infrastructure in that area, but in most cases, Onwassa does. In the last example, Onwassa has a water main that runs right down Drummer Kellum Road and actually has a water tank just to the right of the Commons on Drummer Kellum. And in the southwest example, they have water mains on 53 and on Blue Creek School Road, sufficient to serve the developments that we're talking about. One of the challenges for us is when you have satellite annexation, like I said, most of the time they're looking for sewer. We don't have water infrastructure in that area and the initial development may not exceed the cost that we would see to extend water infrastructure into that area. And along with that, also comes the time associated with designing, engineering, getting easements and permitting and then constructing water mains to serve a development. And in many cases, the developer is looking to move forward as they annex. Although we have seen cases where that has not happened and there is time. So we've worked with Onwassa and kind of identified three options to address some of the challenges we've seen. The first is a master meter for an entire development and I'll get into each of these a little more in just a moment. The second is to extend city water mains into this area. That would mean we would design, permit them and extend them. And then the third is to partner with Onwassa for essentially Water, Onwassa to provide the water. So the first option, master meter for the development, this is the model that we are currently operating under for the first satellite annexation, which was Springdale. The apartment complex is in there, sorry, Springfield, across from Springdale. The apartment complex is constructed. There are people living there. And basically what we have is Onwassa has the main on Blue Creek School Road. We installed a meter right at the entrance to the development. And then the developer installed infrastructure behind that meter and then we have city meters that lead to the apartments. So Onwassa sends us a bill for the master meter and then we send individual bills to the residents. So we pay Onwassa and the citizens pay us. The challenge, well, the advantage to that is we were able to utilize Onwassa's nearby infrastructure. It was pretty quick to design because the development was designing the connection and everything they would need to supply the development with water. All we had to design was the meter and the backflow device to be installed with their development. It's obviously less expensive than installing all new infrastructure and trying to extend water mains out here. And then it was a faster review time. And then the other thing I'd like to add, and I didn't put this on the slide, is if we were to extend mains out there, you would want those mains to be looped back in at some point for water quality and water quantity. So it would help with pressures as an area continues to develop.
Wally?
Yes, sir.
Don't mean to interrupt you there, but when we were talking about this, we were talking about how if we put the water, if we, what was the reason we would have to expend all that time and energy as far as testing water daily?
That's a perfect lead in to this slide. We thought this was a great option. So the option was, you know, this option is a master meter, city system, individual meters. The problem is the state stepped in and said, you know what, this is a brand new system. So the city now has two water systems. We have the city's water system and now we have a water system called Springfield Apartments. We have to do all of the same testing. We have to have the right amount of certifications because you have to have, and it's called an ORC and basically is the responsible operator with the correct certifications. And in order to do this, we had the right people on staff, but we had to move them around. So it really creates challenges in having the correct staffing. And then on top of that, we go out and sample this system just like we would the rest of the city's system. So we take the same number of samples. We have to monitor the water quality, which as you can imagine, we can do nothing to affect water quality because we literally buy it from Onwassa, but we're responsible for water quality. And on top of that, every gallon that goes through the meter, we pay for. So if we go out there and flush hydrants, which the fire department does periodically, then we pay for that water, but it never goes through a meter. So we're not recovering that cost. So this, we thought this would be a very good option for these satellite annexations. The real challenge is that the state has said this is considered a new system. So if we were to put this model anywhere else, the city would have a third system. Or the, I've showed you three satellite annexations tonight, that would be four separate systems. And we don't have the people on staff to do four separate systems, not to mention the, all of the sampling required to keep this model in place. One of the other challenges we have, everybody's familiar with what's happened in Flip, Michigan and Jackson, Mississippi and some of those other places. There's new lead and copper rules that are coming into play. They apply to this system also. So everything that we would do for the city's system, we would have to do for the system. The great thing is this new construction, so most of it will be pretty easy, but we still have to jump through all the same hoops. The second option is to extend city mains, which is exactly what it sounds like. We would construct new mains sufficient to serve planned development in the area. The infrastructure would be the city's. The water would be provided by the city, which means we would control the quality of that water. So we could, we could actually affect anything and would be responsible for anything that happens. And we would also maintain it, go in, make repairs if there were water main breaks or anything like that. We would handle all of the building. This would essentially be just as if they were part of contiguous city limits. Some of the advantages is it is part of the city's system. We would be growing it into areas that we don't currently serve. And ultimately, we control it, we're responsible for it. The challenge is, as I mentioned already, there's large upfront costs associated. In many cases, as you can imagine, if we were trying to extend to the Trask property, we would have to go right down Highway 53. So in most cases, we would probably need easements and we're talking at minimum a 12 inch water main. And again, that would be a long dead end, which we do have to monitor for quality. At least we would have usage on the end of it, so that would help. But at some point in the future, we would also want to loop that back into our system. In addition, we would also have to work with the developer, whether that's a cost share or whether we upfront the cost or we pay for the entire cost of extending water mains. And the challenge comes in the developer knowing and waiting when there's already water mains at the site. Which brings us to the third option, and we have spoken with Onwassa about this option. And basically, that would be that the city partners with Onwassa, at least as an interim step, if we want to come back and extend water mains in the future. So what this would do is use Onwassa's infrastructure. The developer would submit plans to the city and to Onwassa to be reviewed. Onwassa would treat it just as one of their normal development submittals on their, as part of their system. And they would be responsible for the infrastructure and the water that is supplied to the citizens, which means that the sampling and everything would require would just become part of their system as any other development would. Under the scenario, the city would read the meter. And the reason for that is because the city also has other things that we build like sanitation and stormwater fees. So the city would collect Onwassa's fee and just remit it to Onwassa. Again, similar to the master meter, the advantage is that there is infrastructure and, you know, readily available at the site. It's the least expensive option for the developer. It's one of the less expensive options for the city, at least upfront. And it's the fastest, you know, the, it would be just like any other development that would be on the city's system or Onwassa's system with review time.
And so whose meters would you install, Onwassa's or ours?
We would actually install our meters. And we have done that in several other scenarios.
So we would have to actually do the physical installation?
Of the meters.
Of the meters.
The setters would already be there. We would just install the meter. And in this scenario, one of the challenges is we end up with a customer receives a city water bill and if there's a leak, they'll call the city. But the city can't go out and fix the leak because it's technically Onwassa's main. So what we do is I relay the information to typically Matt Paget and Matt goes out and takes care of it. So in this scenario, the only thing the city is responsible for is the physical meter itself.
Right. We have no liability with water quality.
That's correct. Yes, sir. Which is a big advantage for us where we have a system that we can't control.
If we go with this option, could we go back on the Springfield, number one, and make that compliant with this so we get out of the separate?
We have talked to the state and the state said that we could do that, but we would have to work with Onwassa to do that because technically the city reviewed those plans. So we would need to, the great thing is our standards are very close. So I think we could make that happen, but we would have to, it wouldn't be immediate. We would have to work with Onwassa to make that happen. You know, the challenge is if we went with this option and we said, you know, this is an interim step to kind of get development started in an area to where we extend mains out with, you know, for future expansion, at that time, these are technically Onwassa water customers. So we would have to work with Onwassa to move those customers over to a city system. So that is a challenge.
But it's possible.
It is possible. And we have, we actually have one right now that we're talking about that's on Highway 17 that's Onwassa, is on Onwassa's system. And we're, the city has a water main right in front and we're talking about moving that location over to the city's system. So it's certainly possible. But it, you know, again, it's up to the board and the staff at that time.
And the other issue is if we extended at some point in the future, all the costs would be us. There's no?
That's correct.
Potential for cost sharing at that point.
That's correct.
But also we could plan for down the road as far as construction goes. We could get, say, developments going, say, now, and then plan for these big investments down the road.
Yes, sir. We could do that as part of our capital improvement plan.
So in the billing of this stuff, they would receive their bill from us. Now, some of the infrastructure costs is in the bills. How would that work?
So the, they would receive, that's a great question. They would receive the bill from the city, but they would actually, under this scenario, they build Onwassa's rate. And the reason for that is Onwassa has legislation that they have to abide by that says that anybody on Onwassa's system has to pay the same rate. So a water customer in Swansboro pays the same rate as a water customer in Richlands or Holly Ridge or some undeveloped area along 53.
Regardless of actual costs.
Regardless of actual costs. They pay the same rate across the entire system. So that's the challenge. What Onwassa's saying is if we provide the water, you have to bill our rate for us to be in compliance with this legislation. Likewise, there's actually legislation that says if the city's satellite annexes a piece of property, the city can charge a different rate if that's what it costs to provide the service to that area. So we, on both sides, we would be in compliance with legislation.
And in case of delinquent water bills, we have the hammer of the sewer to enforce collection, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
How does, how on an individual basis does Onwassa's rate compares to our water rate?
It's very close right now.
Right, but it's getting there.
But they're getting ready to go. But they're getting ready to go up.
Yeah, they've got a pretty hefty increases over the next few years built into their, their plan.
And as a staff, we had a pretty lengthy conversation about that. The good thing is, in many of these cases, the satellite annexation is not contiguous. Well, the satellite annexation, so it's not contiguous. But if they compare their bill with their neighbor, they're comparing OMWASA rates with OMWASA rates. So at least they're not comparing it to a next-door neighbor who's got a City of Jacksonville bill.
Wally, we still have, OMWASA still has the water in Sunset Acres, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so what kind of differential is there?
The, the difference there is that that was an agreement reached with the county before OMWASA ever accepted that. And basically, what happens there is OMWASA provides the water, is responsible for the mains. We charge city rates, because it's contiguous to our boundary, or it was when it was annexed, because it was involuntary. And we offset the cost if there is any offset. But to comply with the legislation, we cannot recreate that scenario. So if you're comfortable moving forward, staff would actually recommend that we move forward with option number three, which is a fee schedule amendment. And we drafted some language for you, I think it went out as part of the agenda item. And it basically says that for satellite annexation areas that are, that have water provided by OMWASA, they will be charged OMWASA's adopted rate.
Pretty simple.
It's very simple. Option A is not operationally or cost-effective. Option B is clearly not cost-effective, especially when you look at your additional expense of looping back in in the future. So option C is, I think I heard the word no-brainer. You know, it's kind of the obvious choice.
Has some advantages, but it has the disadvantages.
Challenges.
Yes. Well, it's longer than it's down long-term.
I think that's the biggest challenge to option three is you're, you're at the mercy of a future discussion with staff and a board that you don't know that will be in place at the time. That's probably the biggest challenge with option three. It's a great interim step, but we can't predict the future.
Unintended consequence, down the line.
That's right.
Mr. Brown, say that the option that Wally's suggesting, does not apply to Country Club and Sunset Acres. That is contiguous, and the law says those residents have to pay the same rate as we pay inside the city, because they're contiguous. This is only an exception for satellite annexations. Having said that, two points. Number one, it's been twenty-plus years, and you've done nothing. The councils have done nothing to bring them in and to put down lines and to give them city water. So, you know, think about, well, we can do this and that. Look what the history will show you. Number two, speaking to whoever may sit on OMWASA's board, you need to keep in mind that when that was first brought on, there was a differential of a hundred thousand dollars that you and I and everyone else in the city had to pay. Now, that's gotten down a lot. But the council last year took an election not to raise the rates. OMWASA, they raised the rates. OMWASA has said, we're looking to five percent, maybe another year, ten percent. You as representatives, whoever sits on that OMWASA board, needs to keep that in consideration as to how that's going to be, affect you as for, a differential as for Country Club and Sunset Acres, because that's going to dip into your utility fund. When they go up those kind of rates and y'all are doing nothing, or two point somethings, just some pointers to think about.
Does all this boil down to the state's, whatever, D E H R, whatever, requirement that the separate water systems have been considered as separate water systems?
Yes, sir.
And if so, is that something we need to schedule for discussion with our legislative representatives or see about getting this requirement changed?
I think that would be great. We've tried it at a staff level and have had no success.
And Mayor, we've mentioned this to Senator Lozara and Representative Cleveland, that these are items that we would like to look at, because it does create challenges similar to planning and zoning and annexation issues. So we're going to prepare that, maybe even a summary or a white paper that we send to them for this session as well, so that they're thinking about it when they're in the longer session.
And, and you think about development. OMWASA is pretty constrained on new sewer. I mean, they're trying to handle, OMWASA really, right now, is trying to put out fires in, in the southwest area, out towards, really in the Dixon area. They're really the Snitch Ferry and the Dixon area. That's a, that's a big fire. And then they've got the other fire at Swansboro, which, you know, is getting close to being put out. But that, that one down in Dixon, it may be an issue. And they're not going to be able to address development piecemeal here, there, and everywhere that's occurring close to the city. And we've already got sewer in a lot of these places, so it's, it's going to continue to, I think the satellite annexation is still going to be the option most developers are going to want to choose because of cost and time. And of course, in their world, time is money. Not so much on the city side, but more municipal or government side. So they're going to continue to want to do voluntary annexation. And I don't see OMWASA being able, in the near future, in the next twenty years, being able to adequately address those issues.
Just one other legal point. You are constrained by law. Right now, we have about three percent of satellite, the law says is a maximum of ten percent.
Ten percent, you are correct.
Just to keep that in mind.
Forgot that. Always something in there.
Always.
Always something.
Well, we don't have a lot more land to keep growing, so we're going to have to go this route. I mean, there's not that much big development tracks left in the City of Jacksonville without doing the satellite.
Wally, can you put the map back up there?
Yes, sir. Would you like the southwest area, or the?
Southwest.
Okay. So this is the southwest area. For reference, the, kind of the blue line on the top is the water mains that we have along two fifty-eight, twenty-four business. And then you can see the triangle is over here on the right. And then the bypass is the road that has no more lines along it anywhere. And then the Freedom Village Shopping Center is the right above, right above the bypass.
So that's the dark blue ones are OMWASA water?
All of those are, the blue lines you see, minus the twenty-five-hundred, the arrows, are all city water lines. We have water lines that run out two fifty-eight, and those go pick up our Black Creek wells that we have on two fifty-eight outside of town.
Are those raw water, is that what they're, they are?
It's actually Black Creek, so it goes right into our distribution system.
Yes, sir, so technically, raw water, but able to be used.
Yes, it's potable.
Potable.
Yeah, it also takes the water from town out.
It does.
With Black Creek.
If they're not pumping.
Well, it's an issue for us and OMWASA. I mean, it's a, it's a county, I mean, we're, we're in the best position to provide it, but as, as, as Ms. Carter pointed out, at some point, we're going to bump against, bump up against it.
How much of that is undeveloped? And this is, it could possibly be developed.
Quite a bit.
This is a pretty recent area, and I don't have, I apologize, I have to walk into the map. The largest area that we could, so the city's lift station sits right here. This is the soccer fields at southwest on Blue Creek School Road. This is probably the largest piece that could very easily come to this lift station. And then this, this development, it used to be on Brunson Mobile Home Track, closer to twenty-four. This could easily be developed also. And we would expect those would probably come to the city for sewer.
And, and when you think about the interchange that's going in outside the air station gate, you know, what that does is that creates some transportation connection that will connect into this area. And, and from a business park standpoint, this is excellent area to look at a future business park for Jacksonville.
But it's also going to create, developers, residential developers are going to look at that and say, we can, we can put some more, because of transportation improvement, we can put some more, more housing there of some sort.
Again, this is part of getting rid of some of the satellite annexation too. Because if you can get more.
Yeah, if we could get it, if we could get it contiguous.
Yes. Yes, this is all part of our planning for both the capital improvement program, you know, and areas that we really want to go after from an economic development standpoint.
So they're on the one road, that's, I guess that's two fifty-eight.
So this is the bypass?
Okay, that's the bypass.
Yes, sir. So if you're thinking that, I think this is primarily mobile home and some single-family development in this area. And that's really, you know, if you look at the Walmart, this is the closest corner we have. So, you know, if we wanted to make this contiguous, somehow we would have to bridge that gap. But we, obviously, we can't force anything, so it would have to be voluntary.
Of course, when you head down to the seventeen and the bypass, you then start touching the base, the air station.
Yes, across twenty-four.
And that's.
Our, our water runs how far out?
Our water, uh.
Seventeen.
On seventeen, it stops at the NCDOT, DMV area.
On that side of the road?
On that side, yes, it's on that side of the overpass. And then we run right out two fifty-eight. And this point, the reason this exists is we actually have an interconnection with OMWASA for emergencies. So this is actually a twelve-inch main that comes in, and it connects into OMWASA's main on fifty-three. And the idea behind that is we have a meter that we can install in, in the case of an emergency. So if they, you know, if during a natural event, they have water loss somewhere and couldn't get water, we could supply water to them through that connection. Or vice versa, if something happened and we couldn't get water to this area, they could supply water to us.
They have, and they have a connection with, emergency connection with Ring Core Air Station.
They do.
Yes.
They actually supply pretty regularly, I believe.
Well, yeah, during the summertime, during, during the peak tourist times on the beach.
And we have one with, that we put in about five years ago at TT two with mainside. So the three entities, OMWASA, the base, and the city are all connected with emergency interconnects where we could, in an emergency, supply water back and forth.
One, one good thing, I guess, is that water, water's cheaper to install, water lines are cheaper to install than sewer lines. At least they have been.
I need to get, make you get. No, you're getting up and down and everything. Show me all that map, where OMWASA's hookup would be versus where they sell that trash property, where you'd have to hook it on.
OMWASA actually has a water main, they have a water main on two fifty-eight also, just like we do. They're on the opposite side of the road from us. They come down, they come down two fifty-eight, and they come down Ergole Highway. And I can't say, I believe they're actually under the road, but I don't know exactly where their main is. But their, their main down fifty-three runs straight down fifty-three. And then they have a connection that runs down Blue Creek School Road, and they actually have a water main that fronts the service road along twenty-four. So on all of the paved streets out here, OMWASA has water mains already.
And where's ours at?
Our closest point is this location, which is, that's the Walgreens at fifty-three.
And then, of course, you've got Freedom Village.
Yeah, so we have over here in Freedom Village, we do have twelve-inch mains here, and I believe this is an eight that wraps around the building for power protection. So if you were to come across, under the bypass, you could tie in back.
So it'd be very costly for anybody to develop in that area there.
Yes, sir.
So you're, you're, you support option three as far as staff?
Yes, sir, that's, option three is our recommendation, our recommendation at this time. Again, I think we're, we're hoping that this can be an interim step to the point where, you know, in the future, as development continues and we see opportunities to extend our mains, maybe we can do that. And, you know, OMWASA's been very cooperative. We have the water, the Regional Water Resources Group that we're a part of. And we've, we've partnered on a lot of, if you remember the monitoring wells that we did, we partnered with OMWASA, and they funded a portion and we funded a portion. So OMWASA's been very good to work with.
I move we adopt schedule three, option three.
Second.
I have motion second, any other comments, discussion?
Just a quick one. Initially, I was against us being on the OMWASA board, having, having representation. But I think it's been beneficial for both parties. I was wrong, and I've certainly seen the benefits of having, having some city representation on there, so. All for it.
Evidently. All right, motion's second, all those in favor, say no.
Aye.
All opposed. So you've got the, the question.
Thank you, sir.
Now flip your head around.
Round two, right?
That's not going to be a public work.
That's right, we did utilities a moment ago, now we'll get into public works with street rehabilitation. What, what I'd like to start with is, while I'm presenting, most of the heavy lifting is the muscle behind me. So if you see me go like this, I'm looking for information to make sure I didn't say something wrong. But I think this is well timed. Almost exactly a year ago, we kind of gave you an update of the street rehabilitation program and where we were and what we were focusing on. And this, again, a year, that was a, started the budget process, the CIP process, that's the Capital Improvement Plan process. That's why we did that presentation at that time. I think this is well timed. Again, we're getting ready to go into budget and capital improvement planning. And we have recently just finished evaluation of all one hundred and sixty-six miles of the city. So if you ask me about specific streets, we can give that to you. If you ask me about specific blocks, we can give that to you. And I'll, I kind of, it's a new tool that we have, I'll kind of walk you through that and kind of give you an idea of where we are. So again, the, the city does have a hundred and sixty-six miles of city streets that we maintain. And then DOT has forty-seven miles that they maintain. DOT roads are, are your heavily traveled roads such as Henderson Drive, Onslow Drive, Harget Street, Bellford, Gun Branch, Western Boulevard, to be the largest, seventeen, twenty-four. So those are all NCDOT streets. The neighborhood streets, like, in collectors like Carolina Forest, Williamsburg Plantation, Northwoods Drive, Pine Valley Road, all of those are city-owned, city-maintained streets. The city, primary, primary funding for street maintenance and rehabilitation comes from Powellville. The Powellville funds are state appropriation. For this current year, the state appropriation was a hundred, almost a hundred and fifty-five million. It's apportioned out to cities based on population, so that's seventy-five percent of the funding that a city receives. And then twenty-five percent is road mileage. And you can see I have on the slide, the amount that went per person was twenty-one dollars and sixty-nine cent. And then the city received sixteen hundred and seventy-five dollars per road mile. So that's, now, that's road mile, that's not lane mile. So if you have Carolina Forest Boulevard, which is divided, that mile, you will only get the same amount. You don't get a mile in and a mile out. So it's based on road mile. And we received roughly one point eight million dollars for this current year. So that's split up between the street division's budget. So the street division is responsible for maintenance activities for. maintenance activities for all city streets, city sidewalks, urban gutter, and stormwater. The stormwater is funded by the Stormwater Fund, but it could be used, you could use Powell for stormwater pipes and things that drain city roads. We use the Stormwater Fund for that so that we can put more of our money into maintaining, actually maintaining the roadways. So the rest of the Powell allocation goes into the repaving capital project, or your streets project is, as it's commonly known. So we, we put roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand in there. We have pedestrian improvements, which is sidewalks or trails that we do every year, and that, we put a hundred thousand dollars in that, that is Powell eligible. And then we have ADA requirements that we are required to meet, and we fund fifty thousand in ADA improvements. So that breaks up the, the city's budget, this is, what I will add is what streets did not spend of their eight hundred and ninety thousand last year will roll into this year's capital project for availability to fund extra streets. So in your CIP, if you look, I think the, the CIP actually calls for somewhere around eight hundred and thirty thousand or so in the, the street paving, so when you compare that to this slide, the difference is we're accounting for some of that transfer of funds that we don't use in the maintenance. So if we have salary lag or anything like that in Powell, then that would roll into the, the CIP, so any money we receive for maintaining streets, we use it to maintain streets or repave streets. Additional funding that we've seen over the last five years, we received a community development grant where we were able to repave some streets in Foxhorn Village, that was a result of a project that was done, I believe, that, was that Mr. Bates that did that? In Foxhorn Village, so we were able to repave three streets, three streets in Foxhorn Village with that funding. We received two state grants, one for Carolina Forest Boulevard for two hundred and fifty thousand, and then one for Center Street for seventy five thousand. I believe both of those came from Representative Shepherd. And then, I think it was two budgets ago, council appropriated an extra million dollars to put, put towards street paving. So that also went into street paving over the last five years. And then, as part of the state construction and infrastructure grant, we received a million dollars that we can put toward street paving, we received that last year. We have not expended those funds yet, but those are slated for DeWitt Street, I believe. So I, I know you've kind of seen these numbers before, but they are still pretty relative, our last, our couple of last street paving projects that we've seen fall right into this. To mill overlay, we're somewhere between three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a mile. And if we are going to reclaim, and we have not done this in a while, but when we, we get into reclamation, we actually take the asphalt off, and we mix cement into the base, so we're actually treating the base of the street, the subgrade, and then we repave, and you're getting closer to eight hundred or eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that number may be slightly off, because again, we haven't done that in the last three to four years.
Is that what's going on with Coal Drive at this point?
No, sir, Coal Drive, we had, we had sewer line problems, and we went in and repaired the sewer line. But unfortunately, when Belfort Combs was constructed, they did not install cleanouts on the individual services, and the city's responsible for the service between the main and the street and the right-of-way, which is where the cleanout would be. The problem is, we had no way to inspect those because there were no cleanouts. So when we're repaving streets, we survey the, the sewer main, and we survey the cleanouts to make sure that, you know, we're, we're doing our best to prevent going in and paving and then having a failure after we, we repave. So we go in and visually inspect, we weren't able to do that at Coal Drive. So we made the sewer repairs and then came back and installed cleanouts. And then we went through and inspected to make sure that the sewer lines that needed to be replaced were replaced, so Coal Drive has been about a four-part project. So we started with the sewer main, got it right, and then installed the cleanouts, then came back and inspected the services, and then came back and replaced all the services that needed to be replaced. So now what we have to do is repave the, the areas of asphalt that were torn up, and then we'll come through and mill and repave the whole street from Harget to Armstrong.
So when is that, what's going on?
So we anticipate, the problem is, most of the people that do patchwork and repaving get their asphalt from Onslow Paving and Grading. And from what I understand, Onslow Paving and Grading, their plant is offline for maintenance right now. So when that plant comes up, we've been assured that Brookview and Coal will be patched, because those are the two we're waiting on. So, and that's the same contractor, correct?
Correct.
So we're, we're at the mercy of the asphalt plant right now, but we're, as soon, we've been told as soon as the asphalt plant's back online that we will get asphalt, and we will put the patches in both of those streets. I think they actually started Brookview and weather caught them, and then the asphalt plant shut down and caught them again. So Brookview's been a challenge also. So over the last five years, we've actually done just under twenty miles of paving. And prior to that, since twenty thirteen, we're averaging, averaging somewhere right around three miles. Some, some years it was a little over three miles, and some years it was under. So over the last five years, we've actually done better, but largely because of the money that council put in, and then the money we received from the representative. So things that go into figuring out how much streets we can actually pave, one, it depends on the funding. So if we're working strictly with just Powell funds, we're limited. If we have other funds that we can leverage, then obviously we can, we can pave additional streets. The width of the street is obviously a factor, because paving a mile of Northwoods Drive costs, or, or Williamsburg Plantation, costs us much more than paving a mile of a much smaller street, because of width. You know, imagine Northwoods Drive, that street's almost thirty five or thirty eight feet wide. So the wider the street, the less length we can pave. And then the condition of the street has a big impact, how much we have to mill off and put back. In some cases, Kelly in the Streets Division has actually been able to come in and do some milling of some streets that really had no issues other than surface cracking and those kind of things, and really been able to mill and repave some streets and, and bring those streets back up to condition relatively quickly, whereas if you're talking, you know, a street that has infrastructure challenges and other things like Brookview or Coal Drive, those take much longer to do. And then drainage is something that, and you'll see that in just a minute, but drainage is something that severely impacts streets and also the subgrade in the street. And then last is ADA requirements, there's federal requirement that if we repave a street, we actually have to upgrade the handicap ramps along the street that we repave. Because repaving a street is considered major work, so we have to bring things into compliance. Now, if there's not sidewalk along the street, we don't have to go install sidewalk. But if there's sidewalk, we have to bring the handicap ramps into compliance. So that eats into the money that's available also. Deciding which streets to repave, we use several different factors. One being the pavement condition index, which is basically what does the street rate out at. It's a grade, and you'll see in just a minute, I think you've seen it a few times before, but zero to a hundred, hundred good, zero bad, right? So, and then the type of pavement distresses that we see. If it's, you know, a lot of rutting or failure because of underlying infrastructure, you know, you have subgrade failure, that's much more extensive than alligator cracking and, you know, kind of your, your cracking and, and bleeding and ravelling along the pavement surface. And then the condition of the utilities, you know, again, we go back to Brookview and Coal Drive being excellent examples. DeWitt Street is probably one of the worst in the city, again, major infrastructure challenges underneath that street. And then we look at the street classification, the amount of traffic that it carries, the number of houses along that street. You know, we, we leverage, we don't ignore cul-de-sacs, but we recognize that cul-de-sacs don't carry the same amount of traffic as a barn street or a maple or a river. You're talking about streets that carry and disperse traffic into a neighborhood, not just, you know, help the people that live right along that street. And then we look at geotechnical, you know, are, is there subgrade failures or things that we haven't anticipated? The pavement condition is broken down by segment, so it's, it's literally by block, so from intersection to intersection. And the biggest thing to remember is you can have a street that has an A on one end of the street and an F on the, or an E, the lowest rating on the, the other end of the street. And it may change by drainage, or maybe change by utilities, it may change by number of traffic. So if you look at one side of doors, it may differ because doors brings people in, and by decatur, they've kind of moved off. Or I guess plantation and ivy really are a great example too. So it just depends on the number of traffic that it carries, but we constantly see, you know, B, C, D all along the same street, which means that the city doesn't go out and pave a street from end to end. We pave, we try to extend our, our dollars as far as we can, so we, we pave the worst sections. The exciting thing for us as a staff is we've just recently had our entire city raided. We did this with an outside firm, they brought in a van like you see there that used essentially lasers, ground penetrating radar, four cameras, they did a forward-facing, a left-facing, a right-facing, and a down-facing camera. And we have that for every mile of street, and then on top of that, we get a nice little tool that we can use when we're prioritizing work, so we can, we can go look at streets for different distresses and decide what treatment we need to have for that street. All of that drives to the pavement condition index, this is the slide that you've seen before. I will say that it varies slightly, we used a twenty point, or almost a twenty point scale. This came from the company that we hired, this is the industry standard that they use all across the country, this is what DOT uses. So we went with this scale. But same philosophy, you can see seventy five to a hundred is good or very good. Fair is from sixty to seventy four, so you kind of got your A, B, C. Poor is the forty one to fifty nine, so that's kind of your D street, and then failed or very poor is the red, so really, you're talking a PCI of forty. Or less. This is a screenshot from the tool that we received. You can see the forward facing camera on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side, you see two pictures that look like a street. The left side of that is the laser image, the right side of that is the actual camera itself. And a, a great comparison is in the top right-hand corner of the street picture, you'll see a patch that shows up in the camera. But if you look at the laser section, it looks right through that patch. It tells you what the challenge is underneath it, so that's the same, that's the same view from both sides. So the right is a camera, the left side is actually the laser picking up, and it'll, it picks up the, the severity of the crack, the width of the crack, so we can actually use that to make determination in what treatment methods we need to do. So we can decide whether we know, we need to go out and do crack sealing or, or other methods. Looked like you wanted to ask something.
I'm just curious, it looks like information overload. How do you, how do you, how do you take all this information and, and make sense of it?
Well, so the, I picked this one on purpose, so that's a DeWitt Street. So what you're looking at is actually a PCI of thirteen, you can kind of see it highlighted on the, on the bottom right, and then this is where you are on the, the street. So really, what happens is we can actually filter this out using tools, and we can say, show us just the longitudinal cracking.
So you, really, you're letting the computer tell you.
That's right.
Summarize to, to where you can make something useful out of it, okay.
And here's the, the same view, so you can see the hatching. So it'll tell you, you can actually see it says alligator cracking in the yellow, and it gives you, so yellow is moderate, red is severe. So, and then for a street that had longitudinal cracking, it would do the same thing. So you can actually, we can actually filter this and make decisions on where we need to go make investments.
I mean, it really, it helps identify what maintenance techniques should be applied to which section of the road.
You're no longer depending on just the visual inspection, you now have solid data of what's going on to prioritize projects.
The last time that our streets were raided was twenty seventeen, we had a professional that was on staff that went around and raided every street. The problem is, to make it work out to the street grade you needed, he had to kind of say, you know, if you looked at it and the road was a fifty, ironically, if you looked across, everything scored a fifty, because that's what made the road average out to a fifty. But we really, we, we had a good street grade, the problem is you really couldn't make a decision because you didn't know, well, in some cases, you may have cracking but no rutting. So this really helps us in being able to separate out what those distresses are and what tools we need to use to correct that. And then the bottom left is actually the street by grade. So if you'll remember this, this is where we're at for the whole city. So green is good, or very good, yellow is eh, average, right? And then orange is you're getting bad, and red is you're bad. So this is where we sit across the entire city if you average everything out. And again, all of this was, this was done in the least subjective manner possible. They collected the data using the vans that you saw. It was put into the program that you saw. Now, there is some engineering work that is done on the backside, which we do as part of this program that we entered into. We actually have engineers that we can reach out to and seek guidance from. And in the end, they owe us a report that will summarize everything and basically say, you know, if you want to bring your PCI up this much, you need to invest this much money. If you want to bring it up all the way, you need to invest this much money. So it will provide us guidance. And maintenance activities equate to increases in that PCI. So if, if Kelly's crews go out and crack seal, that helps seal the road up, prevent further damage, so the, that road scores slightly better. So it, it's all into extending, you know, spending our dollar as wisely as possible to extend out the, the life of our streets.
Tell, tell us a little more about access to the database, like they gave us this average of sixty one for all our streets.
Yes.
Okay, so when we go in and do maintenance, do we have the ability to go into the database and update for that particular segment?
We don't have the ability to go in and update the database, because this data is, it, it was a one-time collection.
Snapshot of time.
That's correct, but what we have the availability to do is go in. But what we have the availability to do is go in, because what I will say about half the streets we did under the FY twenty-three, sorry, twenty-two?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-two contract were completed and half of them were not when this snapshot was done. It was done in October and it was done over two days. They did the whole city in two to three days. Um, when, what we can do is download, it downloads into an Excel file and we, we can actually go in and change and get an updated score. So we do have the ability to pull the data down and, and manually enter in scores when we, to see where we are. But the idea is that we do this every three years. So this was the base year. So three years from now, and that's, that's the program we were on before, we were just doing it in-house. We raided our streets every three years. So three years from now, we'll go through and we will do this again and we'll be able to have a direct comparison of what we invested money-wise and where we stand.
How much did this contract cost?
This contract cost us right at sixty-five, sixty-five thousand. Um, and just in comparison, we had a personal staff that we were playing with benefits, we're paying at least that to do this.
And you talk about the information overload, for sixty-five thousand dollars, you got all that objective information.
Done in three days.
Done in three days.
Three days of collection.
Did you have a bid out for contract for that particular company?
We, I don't remember how we did that. Uh, I don't remember if we were doing exemption. I think we did it as an exemption.
Because DOT used this contractor. That's how we got into it. DOT, they were in town doing the DOT roads and we said, what's going on? You know, and that.
I remember having to make a quick decision.
While they were here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had to make something quick.
I was actually sitting at a stoplight behind the van and it really didn't have any markings on it, so I took a picture and sent it to Nick and said, figure out what's going on. So that's how we got here, Nick figured it out.
You know, and then, and then the future, I could see us just piggybacking on DOT.
Yep, do it while they're here. So moving forward, uh, we do have to finalize the report. Uh, we do have to provide them some information like cost we have seen, you know, what does it cost us to crack seal? What does it cost us to mill overlay? What does it cost for us, um, to reclaim streets? So we do have to provide that information in, um, and then they'll finalize the report and send it back out. I didn't do that, I promise. And then, um, we will use this information as we're moving forward. We've act, we have already identified streets that we're currently evaluating for the FY twenty-three street project that we expect to go out, um, in the next few months, so that paving can be done over the summer. And then, but as we move forward, we'll be able to use this information to make decisions, um, for future street projects. And then, you know, as we get that final report, we can bring that back to council as part of the CIP process and talk about budget moving forward.
Has this changed the priority of some of the streets we're gonna do?
Not yet, it has not. We're still evaluating the streets that, so as, as part of that process, once we identify streets, I mean, we send crews out to camera, um, and physically investigate. So, you know, we, we would, and we're using, now what I will say is we've preliminary looked at some of those roads and the scores do match similar to what we had. Um, but we're already in the process of investigating camera and all the sewer, all the storm drains, those kind of things. So it wouldn't change what we're working on for twenty-three.
And what you see with the process, Mayor, is you see that the, the plan that the council's put in place over the last three years has had an impact. Because it's got you to a score of sixty-one. The plan now is over the next three years is to find a way to get to good. And I think that's, that's the ultimate end game is to have an overall system that's gonna have good. If, if Wally looks back at the dashboard and, and back where Mr. Ward was asking about that dashboard, how we use it. DeWitt Street, big project, million dollars allocated, asterisk on that slide. Once DeWitt is completed, you're gonna see our score be significantly impacted because some blocks of DeWitt, if you saw that one corner, it ranged from a thirteen to a twenty to a fifty to a forty-eight. All those numbers on DeWitt because it covers such a large impact. It also covers a distance that's gonna leak into multiple areas of town. And so if you remember when we talked about this during, uh, one of our retreats, I had said, I would almost guarantee that there are enough low-scoring streets in the city that we're gonna be able to do projects throughout the city. And when you look at the overall picture, it, they're scattered around, but we also want to connect. So we see an area that is, the newer areas where we see renovation projects that are all green, except for a couple of yellow. Well, those areas are in good shape. We want to move to another district that may have some of the, uh, some of the areas where Kelly's team can maintain, so they don't go down. Wally attributed to potentially with a seal, you may take a street from a sixty-one to a sixty-four, sixty-five. What it won't do hopefully is go from a sixty-one down to a fifty-five and that's part of that maintenance schedule. That's why we allocate the reconstruction and the maintenance. So not that they're necessarily getting significantly better, but they're definitely not declining over a two or three-year period, which is the reason we look at a maintenance schedule versus a, uh, a replacement or a reclamation project. So hopefully when we look at the dashboard, you're gonna see the areas that we can focus. And then when you see what our, uh, what our stats show us on how we're gonna attribute those dollars, it's defined and when the council gets a call, we can show you the metrics. And that's what we talked about before, having the metric to be able to define it. And then the last point that we talk about is some streets that get to that point, for example, that section of DeWitt that scores a thirteen, if that was a standalone segment, one of the things that this council and the staff has agreed upon before is once it gets to that point, we're not gonna spend the maintenance dollars on it. You're gonna let that one basically, uh, go full process until it has to be reclaimed. So you're not gonna spend your maintenance dollars on something that's just gonna be wasted as a, as a patch. So then it'll be, it'll be factored into the reclamation or reconstruction down the line, potentially a year or two years out, depending on how our metric works out, so. A phenomenal system.
We hosted our lo- local legislative delegation minus one, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And one of the, uh, uh, you got notes, uh, Mr. Ray, he distributed notes of that meeting. And one of the, one of the items was, uh, to ask again for, uh, assistance in obtaining possibly a quarter cent sales tax to apply towards road, uh, maintenance, road, road reclamation and that sort of thing. Um, I think that we figured that a quarter cent would generate a little bit over a million dollars, I believe was.
It could go from a million to, to two million, Mayor, just looking at those numbers from this year.
That would help, that would help significantly as far as being able to catch up because we got catching up to do. You saw the map, you know, you saw a lot of red, you saw a lot of orange on that map and, uh, you know, it's, I mean, it's hard to keep up with it because, you know, we have a lot of weather, weather situations here, you know, and, uh, we have, uh, you know, if you look at those cracks developing in some of the roads already, once, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but once the water starts seeping in there, that's, that's basically the street going away eventually.
Water's the enemy.
Yes, sir.
So, um, maybe we can get one of our, see, our letter writers to write a little, uh, letter to, uh, our legislative delegation to remind them of the conversation we had.
We will put that on that this week, Mayor. Definitely a priority.
Out of curiosity, um, if the city of Jacksonville has, is rating sixty-one, what's the rate, what's that normal average for the state?
I don't know, I can't answer that.
What about DOT, do they have that information?
I don't know, we can check in, uh, this company did DOT's rating. So I don't know if they'll share it or not, but we can ask. Nick will put that on his, I think we have a weekly call coming up, so we'll put that on our list and see if they can, that's something they can share.
It would just be interesting to see where we fall compared to other municipalities in the state of North Carolina.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, I would say you're not gonna see a lot of cities across the country that have new metric ratings on their streets right now. But we get to their numbers and you see what that company could provide us. That fair category, I would say fair is gonna be about as good as you can get. You want to get that high fair? So I say for us, we want to shoot for getting our streets to good. Cause that's gonna eliminate some of the, some of the hefty lifting that maintenance has to do. And then we're more into preventative maintenance instead of major ceilings, right? And major cracking and, and alligatoring and potholing, uh, that happens through there. So I, I, I'd be excited to see the same number and then just know we'll have a, we'll have a small sample size to see across the country. Because people just don't ever want to see this system. And, and it's, to, to eke in at a sixty-one on the fair scale takes every dollar that you could put in to at least be at fair. If you wouldn't have taken the action over the last two and three years, I guarantee you our streets would have been lower fifty at best because of some of those projects.
Even the more reason to have that information when we do the letter writing because you have that data to show it.
And show other, show them what other communities are doing and, and for the people that have enacted another quarter cent, it might give us some of that strength.
We could, we could tell you that the FY twenty-two street project is what brought us from basically the fifty-seven, fifty-eight range to the sixty-one range.
But a lot of those red streets we talked before have infrastructure problems.
That's right.
Water sewer problems. And so, you know, if you're spending power bill money, you can only spend that on the paving part of it. So you've gotta bring your water sewer money, take care of the infrastructure part of it.
But if you look at, we, we talked tonight a couple of times about Brookview and Cold Drive. If you look at, Brookview is kind of the circle you see out here on the, right near the river. It's a red and orange, so we will be doing that whole segment with the street paving project. And then Cold Drive is kind of down off of Bowfork Road, um, right near the bypass. And you can see that that is red and orange also. So that will be a, a help and you can see that there's another red one in Brookview also, I mean, in Bowfork comes also. Is that Kit?
Right, Kit.
Um, so, and I think that's actually on the list for FY twenty-three to be looked at.
This is gonna be, this is a, a project in perpetuity.
It is that.
Never stops.
It's never gonna resolve itself, but we can try to make it a little bit better.
Well, and that's our purpose in this presentation, Mayor, is to show you the, um, final preliminary, uh, draft. Because as Wally said, we've got to get the information back in to start looking at how we're gonna move streets from point A to point B, what dollar it's gonna take in what time. But to have this report, we want to have our discussions go back so that in the future, when we're talking to you about a section of street, we want to tell you, well, that's a PCI seventy-two. And then you ask that very intelligent question of, hey, that's seventy-two, what are we gonna go with that? And that's how we're, that's how we're defining the process moving forward.
Question. They also did the DOT roads in the city?
Yes, sir.
But we have no control over that.
That's correct.
DOT paid for that.
That's correct.
And what are they, most of them are yellow, aren't they?
Uh, well, they don't, those are just, that's just the Google map, so you can't, you can't use that color yourself.
It's not the pavement.
It's not the rating, it's just the, the base map that they used. So what, we can ask if they can share that information with us.
Be, be interesting, uh, you know, what it might do, but if, if they're pretty good shape, it might, you know, be skewing us a little bit higher.
If you, if we could factor those in, yes, sir.
But some of those roads have their problems too, um, big time, so.
You know, Henderson Drive before they fixed it was really bad.
Oh, yes.
Our street.
You know, it's, what's amazing, if you look at some of the roads, like for example Gum Branch, that they paved not too long ago, you're starting to see, you know, the cracking in that in Gum Branch. So there's no action required on this.
Correct, no action required.
Hey, whenever we bid, whenever we bid any of this, this workout, can you include that in the management report?
Absolutely.
We have, we have inquiries from citizens, you know, that want to know, when is my road gonna get done or?
We can start putting the street updates on there for sure. I know Council Jackson gets, uh, a number of those requests, so. We'll, we'll give that update, Mayor.
We can also, you know, remind our legislators that our citizens are also their constituents. Their constituents are complaining and asking for these roads.
When you make it to Raleigh, we encourage you to, very good. Gently remind him of that point.
It may not be so friendly, but all right.
We have, uh, one city mo.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have an awesome story here. Uh, a few weeks ago, this is Melody Dale. She is, she works for our transit team. And while serving as a dispatcher, she, um, came across a situation where the driver had someone on the, on the vehicle that wasn't feeling well. They called in to, uh, to nine-one-one. They discussed, uh, the health of the individual and determined that this person probably needed to go to a medical facility. Uh, the driver and Ms. Dale communicated back and forth and come to the idea that yes, we need to, to take this person to the hospital. The driver said, well, what I'll do is I'll complete my route, drop off the passengers that I have, because they had plenty of passengers on there, and then I will return back to the hospital and drop this person back to the hos- to the facility so they can get treatment. Ms. Dale reviewed that and in a split second made the decision that we will stop the route and you will go straight to the hospital facility. Uh, this is, uh, this is one of those decisions that you can imagine. For some, it would be, hey, you're taking me out of my way, uh, it didn't matter. Ms. Dale made this decision, she's worked with, with our transit team for a while now, I think two thousand and ten, uh, plus or minus, she's been here for twelve years. So i- in this position, not only knowing the route, not only knowing the customers, but she made this decision. Uh, the driver took the individual to the hospital and upon walking through the emergency room doors, I believe somewhere in that timeframe, the, the person had a stroke. Massive stroke and based on information provided back to us from medical staff, uh, this decision was not only a great decision, it was a life-saving decision. And so, um, to, almost to her dismay, we had a group gathered together, uh, to recognize her for her actions uh, last week because this is beyond her normal role with transit. And it was an incredible act. And so we have our Apple PIN recognition program where we were able to, um, to give her that as a job well done. But we wanted to share that with the council and with everybody watching on G ten. Uh, as I told the team before, for our police officers, for our, uh, our fire personnel, that's something they deal with all the time. It's not something you hope that we deal with in our transit and it's not something that I deal with on a daily basis. But her action was top-notch. And so, yeah, if you happen to see Ms. Dale, I encourage you just to, uh, tell her thank you because that action was life-saving and it was a critical thinking element in her overall process. Problem was when we brought her in, she was too concerned to be there with us, she wanted to get back to working. And that's, that's just the nature of good, good people and good employees. That's, uh, Melody Dale there and her action is top-notch. Uh, Mayor, if you recall, you were able to recognize the people at our, at our police department for similar actions. And, and so that's a phenomenal opportunity for us. And then we were able to have our, uh, you'll see Chief Hayes here, he's showing you that the, um, calendars are in and they have been delivered. There you go, there's four chiefs right here with the excitement of delivering, um, with delivering our calendars, which is awesome because our calendars are something not only of pride, but it's an effective way that we get out information here in our community. And it's awesome, it shows people when we're doing things, what we're doing and it gives, uh, Chief Tomlin something to be really happy about.
I'm gonna give you a piece of advice too, as a city manager, don't do away with that calendar.
Because when that stack comes in, Mayor.
I'll tell you what, we got more complaints about that ca- not calendar not going out, what year was that, a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
I don't know why we would have anything that crazy, Mayor, the calendars must go. And, uh, like I said, those smiles from four chiefs tell you why we do them because, uh, for everybody that deliver them, our, our city attorney had to hand-deliver a few out there and he was.
Good job, John.
He, I know.
All right.
I was impressed too, Mayor. Mr. Carter gets the call, he wasn't even working, he gets the call.
Expensive calendar.
They were. But he was sitting around.
Let's have him do that from now on.
That's what Chief Tomlin's smiling at, we volunteered the city attorney to go next year.
I won't even ask you what the cost was, but when we started those calendars, and I forget when, probably in nineties or so, they, they were black and white.
And it didn't cost the city anything because we sold advertising and paid for them. But they were a hit from the first year and.
Back when we had a good attorney to let us do that.
Well, I'll tell you, Mayor's a rat.
Pretty losses back there like they're now.
We bid out these this year and we had a fantastic money-saving deal for the year that worked out. Because we go through the bid process, we put it out there. And I think we saved on production, I think we saved about forty-five percent on these. It could be sixty. There was two things we bid and we saved on boat, so one was forty, one was sixty. Point is, I think the material is, is fantastic. I think the, the price was very good. And to have the delivery was, it's an awesome outreach to the doors of our people.
The only year we got a complaint was the first year, when we forgot to put a hole for people. Couldn't think of ever again.
I did get a complaint about one of the people on the picture this year. I told him, I'm sorry, that's how he looks.
I wouldn't take that too seriously.
I opened my door and mine was laying on the mat in front of it. And I opened it up, eh, closed it back up and I, I texted the media department, great job on the calendars, they look great, but I think you broke it, you put my mug in.
That's all we have, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so now we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second five to say hi?
Okay, I.